Good evening. I'd like to call the November 12, 2014 regularly scheduled. Well, actually, this is the day after the regularly scheduled meeting, but this is our day after meeting to order. And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our item two, which is citizen comments. And we have three signed up. Ms. Coppola, would you come up and make your comments to the council, please?
My name is Dee Coppola. I live at 1011 Southeast Puget Heights Lane in Port Orchard. I have a company that's been here, well, I've been here 23 years, and it was here before me, Wet Apple Media. We're a design firm, publishers. And so I came to speak tonight, also all our employees live in the city. I came to speak tonight about the new logo design that's proposed. I was very surprised. $55,000 for a logo design? I was really very surprised that Port Orchard would send this business to Oregon. I was surprised that someone would not think about our bi-local campaign that we have for the city of Port Orchard. And that's been a policy, what happened. I was very surprised that no one that was really qualified locally was contacted at all. Kristy Ewing isn't here tonight. She's going to try to make it, but just in case she doesn't, she owns Ewing Creative. She lives in Port Orchard. She was hired and designed all the logos for the city of Bremerton. I'm glad you're sitting down, because I'm going to tell you what the fee was for the logos for the city of Bremerton. $7,000. I heard you liked the Gig Harbor signage. Did you know those signs were produced right here in the city? So before you're thinking of hiring this out to Oregon, you wouldn't have to pay shipping if you built them here. Very surprised that someone didn't consider the fact that frankly, this looks like cronyism at its best. You know, you've looked at someone that was recommended to you. It's someone that has been worked with before, but frankly, the fact is, they're in Oregon. I would respectfully request that the council table this project until it can be fully researched and vetted, and then put it out to bid with extra points being given to local companies. After running this expenditure by other local city attorneys in our area, every one of them agreed this was a small works roster project. Was it put on the small works roster project list? We're listed on it. Nobody contacted us. They didn't even at least publicize the bidding of this job. But we were never contacted. Festival of Trees, we designed this long ago. We do an award-winning publication. We do award-winning logos. We do award-winning business collateral. Oops, the red light's flicking. We would just like an opportunity. All our employees live here, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson?
Good evening. I'm Catherine Simpson. I live in South Kitsap. Technically, I have a Port Orchard address, but not right within the city limits. But you all are really the city council for South Kitsap. And what happens in the city of Port Orchard affects all of us, whether it's our school district, whether it's our other municipalities, whatever happens in the south end of the county, you all have a lot of involvement in. And so I'm dismayed to see $55,000 for signage logo work. I'm also extremely dismayed that it wasn't on the small works roster. Now, anyone who knows me knows I am not an artist. I have no vested interest in the small works roster for artwork. You would not be pleased with my product. But we have many great local artists. And for some reason or another, they were ignored in this process. I'd like to read from the Agenda staff report of March 25, 2014, in the summary, I believe it was prepared by Nicholas Bond, "A consultant selection process for professional services to prepare wayfinding signage plans and specs for the creation of city logos and branding has been completed." Really? What was the criteria for that competition? What was the criteria for not going, or at least looking, local? It goes on to say, Ambrosini Design was rated as the top firm. It's easy to be top when you're the only one possibly that was consulted. Again, local. We have a chamber campaign, and you all are heavily involved in the chamber, and rightfully so. We have a chamber campaign that's encouraging all of us to buy local. And our city council, our city chooses not to do that. $55,000, that's a lot of work here locally. So I'd like an explanation from the city as to why, one, this wasn't put out to bid locally, why it cost $55,000, which seems to be an exorbitant amount of price for artwork and logo work, and what you're going to do in the future to improve this process so that our local artists have an opportunity to earn their way to these contracts. Thank you, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Whittleton?
In light of what I've just heard, I also must share that I'm a local artist, and I felt completely okay with the decision because it was put before the people in the spring. It was talked about several times here, and there's a professional service roster that people could make themselves available on. Moving on from there, I would like to say that I wish to thank Mr. Clausen for bringing the Finance Committee meeting to the City Hall. It was a wonderful improvement, and the ease of focus and hearing was just awesome. And the resultant audio was great. Which brings me to the contents of the meeting, which focused several times on the reaction of the HBA to proposed impact fees. Mr. Patanzu stated more than once that this issue would be brought to the executive session, or excuse me, yes, the executive session. I would like to understand under what RCW this is allowed, as in my research, I have found no situation that supports this. I am concerned the public, who will also be impacted, will be left out of the informational loop should this be allowed to occur in error. It is very clear the HBA is encouraging the council to adopt their views in keeping the fees low, if any. However, as the public is also experiencing fees, and each citizen is being asked to support their own impact and use of infrastructure, it is only fair that new construction do the same. The suggestion that more construction brings in more revenue through property and sales tax does not pertain to impact. Those dollars are needed elsewhere. I question why the HBA's opinion is so heavily weighted, and wonder if the council will consider giving equal billing to a citizens advisory board, which I believe could be arranged. Also, as a footnote, I know there's deep concern about the wayfinding designs, and I would simply like to note that this is not something new. Had there been particular desires regarding color palette, it would have been proactive to bring these concerns to light at the onset. Nowhere have I found in the DOD where color desires were stated and/or offered up to the committee. That it also be noted that City Hall, the library, and all of the port buildings tie in with the committee's suggested color palette, not to mention the water and mountains. It's discouraging to see things stymied so. You know, this was all put into motion in the spring. We've had lots of time to talk about it, if we really had an opinion. And I hate to see it stopped now and cost us extra dollars down the way. The ball has been rolling. I think we have to follow through, and that's my input on that. Also, I wanted to thank everyone who showed up for the finance budget talks today. That was a lot of work on everybody's part, and I appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all that have signed up, but if you would like to address the council, please raise your hand. Yes, please, come on.
Nikorvot, two for three, Tremont, please. I want to go back on an article that was on the Port Orchard Independent. It's required names and address during public comments. I'm really happy to see that our council members now wants to know who is doing what in order to answer us. That's new for me, because I remember last year you used a lawyer in order not to engage the citizens. Something is really annoying me. You want to put it in 20 minutes. That's you, Mr. Child. You want to keep the comments on 20 minutes because it was too long. Well, I'm sorry. You're working for us, the public. We are your boss, and sometimes we have important things to say to you, or to try to communicate to you. Some of us, like me, we're not fluent in English. I have to read it, and I hate to read a paper. We have to express what we want or don't want, or don't agree with what you're doing. And sometimes it needs more than that. Already, that little contraption is really infuriating me here. This is something we told you, we stay for the three minutes. We're not going to make a speech. We don't like to listen to us. We don't provaricate. We don't do that. And that thing cost how much, $1,500? I think that was a waste of our money, of our tax money. I wanted to see the Constitution on those words, especially the Constitution of Washington State. I already read it once. I'll read it again. Political power, Article One, Section One. "All political power is inherited in the people, and the governed derive their just powers from the consent of the governed, and are established to protect and maintain individual rights." That money would have better used to have that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish, yes, sir?
You guys all look so familiar. I feel like we're old friends. Monday morning, I had the privilege of attending the Finance Committee meeting at Port Orchard City Hall. It was a very professional meeting. Even with my reduced hearing capacity, I was able to hear. Thank you, Mr. Clausen, for holding that meeting there, and I hope it continues. During the meeting, there was a discussion regarding transportation impact fees. You can tell, my wife and I don't communicate at all. The purpose of these fees, as I understood, was to offset the impact of development on our city street infrastructure. First concern expressed by the committee was, how are the Home Builders Association going to react? There is an impact from adding cars to our streets, and the person or persons creating and profiting from that impact should share in the burden. I understand it may cut into the profit margin, but that is a business decision. Expecting the citizens of Port Orchard to pick up the tab to maintain a profit margin for HBA members is just not right, and it does not represent the best interests of the people of Port Orchard. Regarding the wayfinding sign issue, a couple of electives and a group of interested volunteer citizens is a well-formed committee for decision-making regarding aesthetic issues. In the end, some will not be happy, but it's what you get from a committee. Form, fit, and function are the key elements that must be looked at. In this case, form and function are met. Fit is a concern of a few people. The Citizen Committee provided three choices regarding an aesthetic issue for the entire city, not just the downtown overlay district. It is not the council's job to decide what color to paint the proverbial fence. It is only the council's job to decide if it needs painted and how to pay for it. If the council chooses to delay this project at an additional cost to the citizens, the council alone is responsible for that cost overrun, as the intent of the project, in my opinion, has been met. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, yes. Clark Reiner said.
So I have an email that I believe should have been shared with the rest of the council, but it also instructed me to read it into tonight's, into the meeting for the record.
I have a point of order on that letter, and I didn't read it completely, or real thoroughly, but towards the bottom of the letter, I believe paragraphs should not be read into the record, because I believe if they were being said at the podium, I would call a point of order.
Okay. I assumed, based on the length of the letter, I would not get to it before my three minutes is up, but I can read it, and then you can stop me at any time.
I don't know. I haven't read the letter, I don't believe. I'm not sure.
I question, is it appropriate, is this a practice that we're going to, I mean, the letters maybe should be provided to us. I think potentially if someone wants something stated at the podium, that they should be here to state that, and maybe that the letters should just be provided to us in our mailboxes. But that's just my opinion.
Can I pass the city attorney's opinion on this issue?
The council's in charge of the meeting, and if you choose to just accept the letter instead of having it being read into the record, that's up to you.
It's not, I mean, maybe there's instances, like public hearings, where we should make exceptions to that. But as a practice, I can see where we're going to have a half dozen letters read at every council meeting. And, you know, I want to hear from citizens, but I want to hear from them here at the microphone, or they can potentially send me a letter. But it's just my opinion.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I haven't read the letter, because I don't know when it showed up, but I would defer to Councilwoman Ashby's comments that if there's something in there that's alarming or inappropriate, that maybe it's not something we should read into the record, and maybe it's just something we should see. So I would concur.
I actually concur with Mr. Patanzu, even though you guys need to change seats. Your name tags aren't placed properly.
We backwards?
I agree. I mean, we have a three-minute limit on public comments, and if we're going to allow a 10-minute letter to be written or read into the record, it seems like we're giving priority to somebody that's going to send a letter versus somebody that's willing to come here and address this directly. So I think it should be distributed to the council.
Any other comments?
Well, as myself, now that my sign is correct, I would say I have to agree with Rob tonight, because we have heard from five people who took the time to appear and speak to us face-to-face. And I don't know what the letter's about, but if it's not timely, I would prefer reading it.
Agreed.
Okay, then, if everybody's in agreement that you distribute the letter to the council and myself, then we'll read it at that point.
Right.
Okay.
Let's, yes.
Can I, Mr. Mayor? We did have two citizens this evening question the selection process of our wayfinding system. And I know that that was a very deliberate system, and I know that we followed the rules in detail on that. So could we provide the citizens with an explanation? I mean, we could do that in writing or email form or whatever, because I do believe that we have that.
Yes, I did have that, and I'm going to pass it to the rest of the council. I'm sure of how direction you want. What benefit would it be to get it to the public, but I didn't have?
Well, I was thinking just the two people who spoke tonight. I don't, you know, because they came forward and asked and wondered why, and we had a very deliberate process that we went through for that. So if we could provide it to those two, that would satisfy my needs.
Okay.
I think we should go further and read it out, so anyone listening tonight would also hear the answer that we have prepared.
I do have access to the letter. I can read it if you want to, but.
Now, which letter are we referring to?
Yeah, what letter?
Not a letter. It's really an explanation.
Yeah, explanation, excuse me, yes, from the Development Director, Bond.
What's your pleasure?
I believe, is that the letter or the document you're referring to, Councilmember Ashby and Chang?
No, I just know that it's come up before, and that Mr. Bond has, you know, outlined exactly what we did, because I know it was not casual.
Well, I'd be fine just giving it to the people that spoke. I don't know that we necessarily have to listen.
Or anybody else that wants it.
All right.
And maybe you could put it on the website for anyone else.
Somebody hear it.
So it'll be provided to those who testified tonight, and anybody else that requests it?
Yes.
Is that the way we're going to do it? Okay. All right. Very good. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion or comments? All right, seeing none, we're going to be approving the agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Thank you. That motion carries. Okay, let's see. We're going to the consent agenda now. Are there any amendments to the consent agenda?
Move to approve is distributed.
Second.
Motion in a second. Open for discussion. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none. We're going to be approving the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Thank you. That motion carries. Oh, I forgot to ask, is there any abstentions? Nope, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We're going to be moving on to presentations. And Ms. Mabbett, could you come up, please? And would you like to read the proclamation, or would you like me to read the proclamation?
I would be pleased to read it.
Okay. I would be pleased to read it, so. This is a proclamation regarding pancreatic cancer awareness month. Whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6 percent. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late, in the late stages, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 880 deaths will occur in our state in 2014. Whereas, recalcitrant cancer research was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plan for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is a national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Port Orchard, and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, public awareness, educated related to developing effective treatments and cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Port Orchard support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease, we are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Port Orchard, Washington, are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research to early detect causes and effective treatments. I therefore, Tim Mathis, Mayor of City of Port Orchard, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month here in the city of Port Orchard. And I signed it this 12th day of November. So, and I have several copies of this for you. But please, go ahead, and I know you've given us a couple of items. Would you tell us about what you've presented or brought with you today?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Mathis, and the Port Orchard City Council for this opportunity to briefly speak. The packets that I put in front of you are a couple of informational sheets, which I thought were very impactful in giving you an accurate status of where we're at with pancreatic cancer today. My name is Joan Mabbett, and I am a Kitsap County resident. I am a volunteer advocate for Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and the Puget Sound Affiliate. My personal story to this disease is that I lost my beloved husband Buck, also known as LW Buck Mabbett, a well-known and respected orthodontist in Kitsap for over 25 years. We lost him in 2004 to this disease, and from 2004 to 2009, I also lost four family members to this disease. So it's something that has caused me to really work hard to increase awareness within our community. And I thank you very much for your continued support of our proclamation, because it plays a very vital role in increasing awareness locally, but also on a national level, as far as helping us reach our goal to double the survival rate by 2020. If you look at one of the pages of the graph, you'll see very clearly that increased investment leads to increased tools and survival. Cancer research does produce results, both in the number of new treatments and in survival rates. Of the top five cancers noted in this graph, you will notice that pancreatic cancer is not only the least funded, but it is also, has the least survival rates. So we know that with increased awareness, that can drive increased funding, and that is a strong point in why we're trying to get the word out to people. We'd like to rewrite the future for pancreatic cancer. We do not have early diagnostic tests, and there are very few treatment options. It is the dead list of the top 11 cancers, and it is anticipated to move from the fourth-leading cause of cancer death to the second-leading cause of cancer death by 2020. We believe that's largely in part to the fact that there is very little federal research funding for this disease. Also, in your pocket, I have an affiliate informational sheet, which talks to you about what our affiliate is doing locally to help raise awareness, and the many awareness and fundraising activities that we host throughout the year. We just held our Purple Stride 5K Run and Walk, which was November 2. It raised over $320,000. We had our very own Meg Coyle as our MC, and she herself lost her mother to this disease. So it was a very impactful and powerful day, and we're thrilled about that success. Right now, what we need is people to raise their voice, to advocate to Congress that we cannot afford to cut funding for medical and cancer research. The passage of the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act was a major milestone that we accomplished from the hard efforts of volunteers like myself all across the country, just reaching out to our representatives, and just telling our stories, and telling them we need to increase the funding. So now we need people to raise their voice again, and emphasize that we simply cannot afford to have them cut medical and research funding from the budget. Also coming up is tomorrow is Purple for a Purpose, and our first World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. We are fortunate to have the Seattle Great Wheel that will be putting on a purple light show for us tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00. If you're not able to attend this, we ask everyone to support it and join us just by wearing purple. I've given each of you purple ribbons and purple bracelets, and you might and you might note that I gave an extra one. So I'm hoping that you will not only wear one, but you will pass one on and that in and of itself is helping us raise awareness within our community. There's a sheet behind that about Purple for a Purpose. Any and all of these materials are available to anyone that wishes to receive more information at www.wagehope.org or about the organization, www.pancan.org. Their survivor and caregiver network and PALS network, the Patient License Services network, is extremely important for anyone newly diagnosed. They have one of the largest clinical databases for clinical trials, which is extremely important because that's where scientists are getting their statistics and directing their future treatments. So when you're diagnosed, it's really important that you roll up your sleeves, do your homework and knowledge is power. And that's why I wanted to make sure that people are aware about the organization and our local Puget Sound affiliate. In short, we ask everyone to help us rewrite the future for pancreatic cancer. I provided a sheet that indicates the many ways that anyone can get involved. Even if you just have five minutes of time, you can go to our national website, put in your zip code. It will pull up a template for you that you can add a paragraph on your personal story or your reasons why you feel increasing federal funding for pancreatic cancer research is important. Simply fill that out, hit click, and you have made a difference in raising awareness and letting them know of the importance to increase federal research funding. That's pretty much all I have except for the video, if that's possible. And it's our new campaign to wage hope. It's actionable items that anyone can take from the comfort of their own home and on their own home and all of them will play a vital role in us rewriting the future of pancreatic cancer. Thank you for this time.
All right, thank you. Now, you say you do have a...
I do have video. I think she's, yeah, it's our brand-new campaign Wage Hope. It's really uplifting and inspiring and it shows the power of what volunteers can do.
Hope is the inspiration that drives us all, the thing that keeps us going, and our hope is strong. To be clear, this is not the cross our fingers and close our eyes and make a wish kind of hope. This hope has teeth. It has fire in its belly. It takes no acquisitors. This hope is the credible expectation that change is coming. Positive change, actionable change. And make no mistake, it is coming. We will wage hope by advancing, not merely on one front, but many. We have the most brilliant minds, the most tenacious advocates, the most giving volunteers and the most compassionate hearts on our side. And we are enlisting more recruits to our cause every day. We will explore frontiers, push boundaries and guide patients down bold new paths. We will change the rules and rewrite the laws. We will step forward together and command attention. We will make giant purple strides. We will be a source of empowering knowledge and uplifting strength. We will be a rock. We will rise above the past and champion the promise of a brighter tomorrow. Those afflicted with this terrible disease deserve nothing less and there's absolutely no time to stand still. But we can't rewrite the future without you. So please join us in our fight. Raise your voice, make your donation, volunteer your time and help us wage hope in the battle against pancreatic cancer.
So Joan, I just wanted to say that I can't imagine a better spokesperson than yourself with, it's incredible, your passion and your dedication to this. Your loss is noted and, you know, I'm proud that you've come up here and done this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I appreciate all of your support.
Okay, the key to presentation that was listed as 5B has been canceled for tonight. So, and there's no public hearings scheduled. I would like to move Ms. Deb Howard. It was a late addition to our schedule here at 7F. And so she can go home after her presentation. I'd like to move that to number up on top there at least. So Deb, could you lead us into that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor Mathis and City Council. On November 27th, 2014, Public Works employee Ray Petty will be retiring. With his retirement, the city will be losing 42 years of knowledge and skills in the daily operations and maintenance of the city water system. The city will need to fill this gap by hiring a knowledgeable water systems coordinator to manage the city water systems. A new job description was created with a salary step schedule from a comparable with PUD-1, Silverdale Water District, Westside Utilities and our comparable AWC cities. This position would retain the duties of a Public Works employee, but would also require five years' experience and certifications for a water distribution manager, too. This position will be a valuable asset to cross-train current Public Works employees in the maintenance of the city water systems. At the November 10th, 2014 Finance Committee meeting, the committee recommended approval of this job description and salary step schedule within the Public Works Engineering Department. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution approving the job description and salary step schedule for a Public Works Water System Coordinator position in the Public Works Engineering Department.
Yes, Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution approving the job description and salary step schedule for the Public Works Water System Coordinator position in the Public Works Engineering Department.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We're open for discussion, Mr. Clausen?
Well, I would just simply comment that, as Deb mentioned, this did come to the Finance Committee. The committee talked about it and agreed with this approach of creating this position or modifying the existing position to be able to provide for this level of expertise into the city as well as we asked to have it put on to tonight's agenda for discussion by the full council because of the timing of the retirement. It would be nice that we could get our recruitment going sooner than later for this replacement.
I just concur with Mr. Clausen and the reason it's coming before us versus waiting for the budget process, completion of the budget processes, Mark wanted to get the job posted sooner versus later. And this is, by tweaking this job description, we're affecting the org chart, which needed to be brought before the council.
So you just carried two for possible, Lewin's retirement date?
27th of November.
Yeah.
Yes, it'll be, we'll have a small period there when we won't have that position filled, but this will at least help us get...
We'll get it going.
Get it going.
Jumpstart it.
Is there any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Go to Business 7A. Adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 1.18, Public Records Requests. Clerk Brannerson, could you lead us into this one, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Staff has reviewed Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 1.18, Public Records Requests and recommends the following changes. One is to correct some grammar errors. Two is to remove language that the city will not accept public records requests by email as this is inconsistent with RCW 4256. Number three is to add the statement that if records are immediately available, that there's no requirement to fill out the public records request form. The records can be immediately inspected and/or copied. Number four is to include language that the references, the option to provide an internet link if requested records are on the city's website. This was an option that was added to RCW 4256 520 back in 2010. Number five is to clarify what records are exempt from disclosure and include these items that should be on a privileged log. Number six is to change the number of copies that are free from 10 to 15 and add language to include that up to two discs per request at no charge. And then lastly is to add language for an alternative dispute resolution. So council has discussed this proposed ordinance change in the August Work Study Session. No recommendations of those changes were addressed to staff at that time. Staff does recommend the council to adopt the amendments to the Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 1.18, Public Records Requests as presented.
Ms. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 1.18, Public Records Requests as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second. Motion and a second, discussion.
I would like to just tell Brandy, thanks for your patience. I know this has been brought forward a few times and finally got it on the agenda and get your vote, so.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to thank you also for clarifying because there's been a lot of confusion about whether we do or do not accept public records requests by email and this clarifies that we do.
Correct.
Thank you. Well, it was reported in a publication that we don't, but we do.
Yeah, and that's inconsistent with state law. There's no requirement to fill out a form or any format that we receive the requests. We're required to fulfill it whether we have spam filters in place or not if... So we're just taking that out.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay. Seeing none then, we're going to be voting on a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Thank you, that motion carries. Okay, moving item, Business Item 7B, Adoption of Resolution Adopting Policies and Procedures for Processing Public Records Requests. Clerk Brannerson, tell us about that one, please.
Yes. So over the past few years, the city has seen an increase of public records requests. Not only has the number of requests increased, but the complexity of the requests has also increased. As citizens get more involved in their local government, they tend to ask for records requiring significant research, email correspondence and audio recordings and/or videos. Prior to 2012, the city's clerk's office spent approximately four hours per week, which is about 3.5% of their time coordinating the city's responses to fulfilling records requests. For the past three years, there has been an increase of public records requests. This year, the clerk's office has been spending approximately 22 hours per week, which is 20%, responding, coordinating and fulfilling records requests. In addition, other departments have been called upon to devote significant staff resources to the increasing workload associated with those requests. While some may suggest that the condition is temporary, staff is inclined to believe that it's not entirely the case. The diversity of requests that are being received, together with the experiences of other local governments throughout the state, suggests that the city must put in place a framework that will enable it to respond to the demands of the public and the law while maintaining a reasonable deployment and allocation of its staff resources and budget. So therefore, staff has prepared a policy and procedures for processing public records requests. The key processes are as follows. Defining routine and non-routine requests. Defining the reasonable amount of time to spend on processing requests. Defining the responsibility of each employee. Defining the process for responding to a request. And providing a list of the most common public records that are exempt. Council discussed the draft policy at the August Work Study Session. Their comments from that meeting has been addressed in this policy. In addition, staff has asked AWC, who is our insurer, and the interim city attorney to review this policy. Their comments have been incorporated. Staff recommends adopting the policies and procedures for processing public records requests as presented.
Mr. Chang?
I move to adopt a resolution adopting the policies and procedures for processing public records requests as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion. Mr. Chang?
I'd like to add that I recently attended a conference along with the city clerk and deputy city clerk by the Washington Association of Public Records Officials. And one of the takeaways that they had there was that there is no insurance that would cover us for any penalties for not meeting public records requests. They told us of a lot of the horror stories, such as the one in Snohomish County, which I believe is for $575,000. I believe it is on appeal. They also told us of the different types of requests that people get, such as requests from prisoners asking for their staff's personal information and how the law is actually evolving in many ways. But I was struck by that there is no insurance in the world that will protect us from any penalties should we not follow the guidelines of the public records process. And I think we're very fortunate to have two experts in the city, at least two experts.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay, then, seeing no other comments or discussions, we'll be adopting or voting to adopt Resolution on Policies and Procedures Processing Public Records Requests. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? That motion carries, thank you. Okay, Adoption of Resolution Setting the Amount of Property Taxes. Mr. Martin, could you lead us into that, please?
Thank you, Mayor Mathis, members of the City of Port Orchard, City Council, citizens of Port Orchard. On October 14th, a public hearing on revenue sources for the current expense general fund budget was held. The hearing included a discussion on property tax being considered for collection in 2015. On the staff report in front of you is a comparison of next year's levy amount to this year's levy amount. I might call your attention to the right column, the 2015 levy, $2,240,898. The city is allowed an increase of up to $10,000 in 2015. New construction is allowed, $28,839. There was no annexations for the calculation. Refunds, $46,458 for a total 2015 levy, $2,326,195. State law establishes a maximum levy rates for the various types of taxing districts, the state, counties, cities and towns, fire districts, libraries and the districts and the like. Total 2015 levy amount is... Total 2015 levy amount is estimated to be $2,326,195 based upon an estimated maximum $1.72 per thousand of assessed valuation. 2015 levy annexation amount is estimated until the final levy calculation is completed by the Kitsap County Assessor. Projected 2015 tax levy of $1.72 calculates a tax of $345 on a house assessed value of $200,000. Recommendation, Finance Committee recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. That's your pleasure, Counsel. Yes, sir. Mr. Petonsoo.
I move to adopt resolution to set the 2015 property tax levy and the amount of property taxes to be raised for the budget year 2015.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klaassen.
I'm fine with the, obviously, the levy rate. It's been said, but I'm not really fine with an increase on that. I think there's other ways to come up with that money, so I'm going to say no.
Okay. Other discussion? All right. Seeing no other, throw your hands up or any other discussion. Then we're, the motion for consideration is to adopt a resolution to set the 2015 property tax levy as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The record show there's two opposed. That motion passes by a majority. Okay. Item seven D, approval of contract authorings and mayor to execute an agreement with Aspect Consulting. Mr. Dorsey, could you please tell us about this one, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. Pursuant to the scope of work identified within the Morris Law memorandum dated October 14th, 2014, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department requested professional, a professional services proposal from two qualified environmental consulting firms listed on the city's or MRSC professional services roster. Only one proposal was received, that being a proposal for environmental services Marina Marte List Property, 514 Bay Street, from Aspect Consulting LLC. The requested proposal provides for a five-year maximum, 2015 to 2019, contract whereby year one, 2015, provides for residual source evaluation and initial groundwater sampling and reporting, $7,788. Subsequent years, 2016 through 19, provide for the continued groundwater sampling and reporting, $4,715 per year as needed until test results support a no further action determination by the Department of Ecology. The Public Works Department has confirmed that the professional services proposal process was followed and that the proposal will be funded in both the 2015 general fund of the approved budget and subsequent budgets until the NFA determination is received by Ecology. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Aspect Consulting LLC for the 2015-2019 Marina Marte List Property Environmental Services in an amount not to exceed $7,788 in 2015 and $4,715 per year for a maximum of four additional years as needed, with the contract term beginning January 1st, 2015, and ending no later than December 31st, 2019.
Okay. Mr. Petonsoo.
Move to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Aspect Consulting LLC for the 2015 through 2019 Marina Marte List Property Environmental Services in amount not to exceed $7,788 in 2015 and $4,115 per year for a maximum of four additional years as needed.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, then we're open for discussion?
Just for clarification, you said 4,715?
715 per year for a maximum of four additional.
I thought you said 4,100, so I just wanted to clarify.
I probably did.
I probably heard it that way, but I want to clarify. Has it?
All right. Discussion, then.
Discussion, I mean, this is, the reason the first year is so large and subsequent years are smaller is that this is a task we should have been doing as.
Catch up.
Yeah, catch up. And we need to get back to doing monitoring this property. It's our responsibility.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, then, we're going to be approval of contract authoring the mayor to execute agreement with Aspect Consulting LLC. And that contract is from 2015-2019 as read into the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Discussion, KRCC ART. Mr. Petonsoo, could you tell us about that, please?
Well, this is a continuation from our work-study. It was supposed to be on our agenda when we had a very lengthy meeting one night, and it was moved to this evening. So sorry there's been such a delay, and this isn't fresh in our minds anymore, but I have gotten an email from Beck. I'll let her speak to her comments. And just to refresh your memories here, I have a meeting this Friday with our committee. I'm hopeful to get some direction from you guys as to what we're willing to support. Ultimately, Mayor Mathis will be voting on this, our, you know, what the committee's recommendation at a KRCC meeting in the near future, I believe. I don't have a date yet.
I don't either have a date.
So, refreshing your memory, the committee's recommendation is to transition to an independent agency. Remember, we've studied the different options that are available, that core functions would continue to be funded by the dues, the current dues structure, that potentially a transportation surcharge would be adopted to build reserves. The reserves were depleted in the economic downturn when we shrunk everyone's dues. In turn, then, the surcharge would fund reserves. It would also then fund the transition. This transition to an independent agency, I don't believe is going to happen overnight. We're going to need to contract with McClure Consulting or another consultant for a year, two years, three years, until sufficient reserves are built, then office space is leased, so on and so forth. It isn't going to happen, I don't believe it'll happen overnight. And then lastly, the surcharges would be used to fund an expanded scope at KRCC. And primarily what we're talking about there is we need a larger presence at PSRC. We need to be across the pond and present more than we are, and it takes additional money, some monies to do that, whether it's a consultant or whether it's staff, you know, paid staff from the proposed independent agency. So that's pretty much what I have. And Beck, you want to speak to your comments?
Yeah, I will. Because I wasn't sure when we were going to get a chance, this council, a chance to discuss the changes in KRCC in relationship to when you were going to have your last or your next meeting. I went ahead and composed an email, and I'll just read it. It says, "The City of Port Orchard has been unable to discuss the ART committee recommendations as of yet. Please accept this email as my personal comments on the proposal. I support the concept of KRCC as an independent agency with employed staff." So I accept the overall concept of moving from it going, being with a consulting firm to it being an independent agency with employed staff. The financial element of the plan defines the success of sustainability. My bias is to tighten the scope of the KRCC activities and therefore the expenses in order to create a balanced budget. The current revenue options range from 0.75% to a 1% surcharge of each jurisdiction's general fund, plus a 1% to a 2% surcharge on transportation funding awards. The transportation funding award piece is a variable amount. In my opinion, the constant expenses should be funded by more consistent revenue. I would favor using the formula of 1% of the general funds and no more than 1% to 1.5% of future transportation awards. Increasing the dependency on transportation funding awards may create problems in the future. And I say that because we never know how much money we're going to get each cycle through PSRC. And if we're going to do this, we need a more consistent source of revenue for the basic services. And I would like to see us hold that surcharge for access to the federal funding to 1.5%. Even today, when we did our budget thing, our budget meeting, and we're looking at our local match right now at 13.5%, I propose that we not increase that more to 15, more than 15% rather than going up a full 2%. And in our, the way this reads in the staff report, and when we looked at, again, the budget today, for 2015, there's not going to be an increase to us, but there will be in 2016 and beyond, after we get through the transit, well, and there even would be this year if.
Potentially.
Potentially.
It's undecided at this point.
Right. But I really wanted to see, and then I sent it, I had separate communication with Mayor Ann Blair of Bainbridge Island. Ann, in that, just at the bottom, I, what I said to her is, "The restructuring is an important element for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is accountability. My bias is not to expand government, but to have government, the government process be efficient and effective. KRCC's role should be tightened scope to be manageable and fundable. The expense side can easily get away from us if we do not carefully define and limit the revenue streams. The percentage in the formulas could increase over time if we don't establish the parameters upfront." That's only my concern, is I can see it getting away from us if we don't have some strong parameters right now. And so those are my comments. I like where it's going, I just think we need to, the ART committee or KRCC needs to work on the budget piece.
And I believe that budget piece will actually come from the Policy Board at KRCC. We're just a, the body making a recommendation on how to restructure the agency.
The agency, yeah. And I do sit on the KRCC, the Policy Board, I think. I sit on one of them. That's one, okay.
So you'll have an intimate say in that, where we're making a recommendation on the overall structure of the organization.
Mr. Charles.
I actually think you guys have done a great job of working on this and bringing it all forward and trying to move it forward so it's, takes us into the future and it deals with all the costs and make sure that we're all in this together. But where I have a problem is the surcharge. And the reason I have a problem with the surcharge, whether it's 1, 1.5, 2%, is we have these huge projects coming forward. I mean, Paul's just did this massive project on their Highway 305 thing. They're going to escape all this, this 1%, 1.5, 2%, but Port Orchard's not. We're coming forward with Bethel, we're coming forward with Tremont, we're coming forward with the Bay Street pedestrian pathway. And if this catches us, we're going to spend way more than in these other jurisdictions. And we're just a little community, and I just don't, you know, I, give us five years and I'll come back and change my mind, but right now, it feels like we're just going to get caught right at the wrong time.
I think we'll be lucky to get that funding. And if we don't change the way this agency's funded, it's going to come, the request is going to come from our general fund, because the agency needs to be funded. It's just how do we fund it? And what we're trying to get away from, the asking everyone for general fund contributions and those that get awards, which come from transportation sources, would pay for the agency.
I just have to say it in that that was your hope, that it would come out of the award, but it cannot come out of the award. It's part of our match. So if we ask for $1,000, we can't take, you know, the 1% or the 2% out of that $1,000 and give it to KRCC. That's just part of our match. So it does become a direct expense to us.
And that's the comment about going to 15% from the 13.5% is that we have to add out of our general fund.
Yes.
To our local match.
Right.
But only if we get it, we're only going to pay that if we get an award.
That's correct, but it's not like we're going to get.
Yes.
Extra money to pay for that.
No, you're absolutely correct. But those of us, if we don't, we aren't successful getting awards, we won't be paying for as much of the organization.
Does that apply to anything that we have in the works right now?
It depends on when it's implemented, but any of these funds, grants that we get from the country, PSRC to KRCC, correct, Mr. Dorsey?
Right. This won't affect the current three-year cycle that we're in right now, the 15, 16, 17 cycle. You're really talking about funding for 18 or 19, correct?
No. No, no. They're talking about doing the surcharge starting in 2015 in order to fund the transition and build the reserves.
So the only thing that we have in that, then, is our current 1.5 million Bay Street.
Right.
Nebraska.
And the other logistical piece that hasn't been answered yet is, at what point is that due? Is it upon the award? Is it upon the obligation? You know, it being obligated or actually receiving funds?
It's, the proposal is, is when we certify our right-of-way and are going to bid. So we're that, Mr. Klaassen, you can better speak to that because you deal with this at transit. What is, what a point is that called? Is my.
That's obligation.
It's obligation.
It's obligation. So when we obligate and we're going out to bid, that's when we have to write the check, not when we get the award.
But it could be obligation of PE, design, or obligation of right-of-way funds.
Depend, depending on what you got the funding for.
That's just a percentage of the grant that you would get. It's when the grant, whatever amount is obligated to your project, that's the point at which you have to contribute to this effort.
Yeah. My point is that it's at what they call implementation phase. So that's, there's three implementation phases: PE, or design, right-of-way, and construction.
I think it's when it's obligated. When you get notice that your project, whether it's in all three phases or whatever, is going to be a recipient of the funds, it's obligated. You could then move forward with spending that are obligated.
Right. Yeah, we're saying the same thing. What I'm saying is you, that you obligated those three separate. Typically, you'll obligate PE, then obligate right-of-way, or obligate construction at different times. So you're.
I don't know that it's when you obligated, it's when the granting agency obligates it to your project.
Right. That's the DOT, you get the obligation to the state. But what I'm saying is, is you'll, you get the money at the different times. So you'll have an obligation for PE, for example. Then on the same project, you would have obligation of the right-of-way.
You could be paying it.
Then it would be making three different.
Right.
Potentially. Just to address quickly, but address Jerry's comment here, you're right, that we hopefully are going to have an opportunity to pay this fee, but there's three agencies that can play, that play in much larger pools of dollars than us. The county, the transit agency, and the city of Bremerton have access to much larger pools of dollars than the rest of us even get to share. So the lion's share of this, you know, this funding surcharge is going to be paid by those three entities.
But this is, this is only the monies that are allocated through KRCC. This doesn't affect those that are coming from PSRC.
I believe you're right.
Because there are fundings, for example, transit that come directly from PSRC to transit, and doesn't come through KRCC. And then there is another bucket that comes through.
Through PSRC.
KRCC process.
So it's strictly through the KRCC countywide.
Correct.
As opposed to the K.
So it's strictly through the KRC countywide, as opposed to the KRC regional or emergency action or transit authority? It's specifically the countywide is...
My understanding, at least.
Jeff Haddick.
You actually answered it. And the question I was going to ask, thank you, was, can we pay the surcharge as the money comes in? And I think I heard you say that. It's not one check as soon as it's a green light. As we get money, we would pay the surcharge out theoretically.
Right, but that, but we're going to have to budget for that potential surcharge.
But if the grants, if the grants doled out over a four or five-year period for a construction phase, that surcharge would be paid out over four or five years.
I don't think so.
That was my question.
It's an obligation. It's an obligation. It's not, it's not when we get the money, it's when we go out to bid. We're going to need to budget for it. There's no doubt about it. It's to be part of our budget process. So on this pedestrian pathway, matter of fact, we should potentially be putting 1, 1.5%.
We better get back in the back.
We might need to go back. But it's, those, all those details, that's what I'm here for, is, we're having another meeting, nothing's, you know, it's set in stone yet, and I want your input so that I can gain consensus and go back. Last thing we want to do, we've worked on this for 10 months.
That's right.
We don't, we're not, trying not to work in a vacuum over there. We make a recommendation and then you guys, what are you thinking?
I think this may be an oversimplification, but in the case of transit, we use federal grants to buy buses. We get notice from the feds that the monies are obligated to us. At that point, we can go out to bid and go buy buses. When the buses are delivered, then we go back and ask for a disbursement from that grant. So we will have spent the monies and will have had to pay our share of this way back before we even go out to bid for buses. Once it's obligated by the feds, then what I'm understanding is that's when our share is due.
Yeah, that is, it isn't decided, but that is Mary's desire, because if it was with each little, because, okay, it would be unfair to get it at the award, because we're probably, from when you get the award to when you really spend the money is a couple of years.
Long time.
Yeah, long time. At obligation, if we did this at, as each little, like John said, when we've done these projects, we spend the money and submit for reimbursement. And so it comes in bits and pieces. It would be an accounting nightmare to try to, you know, and we'd create a whole bunch more work if we tried to do it when we were getting our reimbursements. And so the hope is, it's going to be at obligation, so it's only happening a couple, you know, there might be a couple of different points in that, but it's not overly cumbersome, you know, and isn't creating a whole, so we don't have to hire two more account, two more people in our accounting staff and one more at KRC. That is, that isn't helping the problem if we do it when we're getting our money.
I would like to interject just one other piece that was discussed at KRC. And that is the either 3/4 of a percent or 1% dues coming out of our general fund. And that seems reasonable to me compared to what we've paid in dues before, to what our general fund dollars look like. Some of the jurisdictions have concerns about that, because the city of Bremerton has a fire department that they fund through their general fund, where the rest of us have fire districts that are separate from monies going through our general fund. And so they express some concern that their general fund budget was significantly larger because of the fire department. So they were looking from some equality there. The city of Paulsbo spends a great deal of money on their parks department. They have a very elaborate parks department. And so they weren't suggesting that they not pay as much, but they were comparing that to Bremerton's fire department, saying that we all have unique things in our, in our general fund. But Bremerton did express concern that their general fund budget does take care of a complete fire department, where the rest of the jurisdictions didn't have that.
And that's the debate's, we're making a recommendation and Policy Board's going to, you know, debate the finer points of this and, you know, complete, complete this document to bring back to us.
I was going to say, I don't think you're ever going to find a perfect system, because, you know, I'll put my transit hat on and say, no, I get no property tax. We have to live on sales tax alone. So is that really fair?
But what you're looking for now is what you're going to take back to your next meeting.
We're not, we're not, like I said, this isn't, we're not ending this here tonight. I'm just looking for some direction.
Well, I have a question, and I've been sitting here thinking about it as far as the timing. The grants that have been applied for and we're waiting for information on, that really is, what year's funding, 17?
Right. We, every, I'm assuming this is only going to impact funds to be obligated, no funds that are currently obligated. So the only funds that we have to be obligated are the Bay Street pedestrian pathway, and this funding cycle was a three-year funding cycle for 15, 16, and 17. So we have no opportunity to get any additional funding unless through an emergency action over the next three years.
Well, I guess I'm just suggesting, maybe we should implement this new method at the point where jurisdictions are applying for the new monies, which would, would be the 18 funding cycle, as opposed to, I mean...
Push this process out even farther.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, is you push it out, because playing on Jerry's comments, Port Orchard and various jurisdictions around the community have put in their requests for funding without having this potential obligation. So maybe this new obligation should go hand in hand with jurisdictions throwing their ore in the water for more funding.
That seems fair.
One other thing, just...
Is that your, one second. Ms. Luca Riley had her hand up first.
Well, when we were having this discussion, I asked Rob Gelder, at what, at what point are the reserves to the place where they should be? I mean, is there going to be a limit on what those reserves are? And then can that fee be reduced?
That would go to the Policy Board. That's not...
I don't think it should be endless. I think we need to have a limit.
Let me, if I could, from what I've understand of the budget side, because I like the numbers part best. The monies that would be collected in 2015 as part of the transportation surcharge would be to build up the reserves. If you look at the budget of the new entity, this is where I have said we need to make sure we understand the scope and the activities of that, because, no, they're needing that funding annually for their projected budget. So they have provided a couple of different alternatives of what their scope of work would be. So I think we really need to work on that side. But to go to Mark's question, they do have, in this one paper we have, it says, "One-time reserve for revenue cost, transportation project surcharge for prior cycles unobligated." So they are putting in one of these alternatives for prior cycle unobligated surcharges.
So that would affect Tremont, for example, because we're still unfunded, unobligated for construction. So that implementation phase then would potentially fall under that. And instead of being 86.5% and 13.5%, you'd have 86.5%, 13.5% budgeted, plus an additional 1.5%. So in that case, that would be a fairly significant number.
It's huge.
Can I finally say something? No, I'm kidding.
Mr. Chang, please.
I certainly agree with the continuity of the KRC and the regional body. I'm still puzzled as to why the proposed dues are considered equitable. When I look at the difference between 2015 and 2016, some agencies, certainly it's more appealing for them. The counties' dues drop by 50%, Bainbridge's dropped by 43%, Port Orchard and Paulsbo's jumped by 26.4%. That's before the additional surcharges. So I'm wondering, why is this considered appealing to us?
The dues in the past has been based on a combination of property values and population. No, it's been, it hasn't had anything to do with money, it's been population and property values. And that's why, and they're moving away from that to a percentage of general fund monies.
And it benefits them, them being the county, but it doesn't benefit us. But why is that considered a better formula for us?
It's not. I don't know. I'm just...
No, that's, that's the question that I have. I mean, transit's more than doubles, and I know that that's paid for by all the entities, but I don't know why this is considered appealing to ours.
No, transit's isn't paid by all the other entities. I'm not sure what you mean.
It's paid by...
A portion of the sales tax, I guess.
Countywide.
It's, a portion of sales tax has been added on to, specifically devoted for public transit. So it's coming right out of public transit's budget.
Right. What I meant was it came from countywide, not just a certain entity, but, if I stand corrected.
We're getting away from the scope of what we're supposed to be. We don't control this, the Policy Board does.
Okay.
Okay? That isn't, that isn't, yeah, but that isn't what we're, we're here debating here tonight, is whether or not we support, so the only thing I've gotten so far in the, so do we, I guess, one, do we support the concept of an independent agency? That's one thing I need to take back. And I've heard one, okay, so we, so it sounds like we do there. Okay? Do the funding formula, I'm hearing, you know, a bunch of questions here, but potentially, are we comfortable with shifting to an awards, what those percentages are is yet to be worked out?
I would say yes, but echoing the, not for anything we've already looked at match funds for, or budgeted match funds for, so not for the pathway, if we've already set aside our 13.5%.
We haven't finished our budget. We're in, we're in process. But I've heard that from Mr. Clausen also.
Yeah.
What, at what point do we, we would like this funding formula to change is when? The next cycle, which starts when?
We'll let them know.
2018.
Great cycle.
2018.
For the funding that's going to be allocated in 18, so I guess you'd be applying for it in 17.
Yeah, that was even a debate, and there was confusion as whether or not we are actually going to be starting the application process in 16, but the funding should not be available till 18.
Okay. So I'm, I'm fine, I'm just the messenger. I'm taking this back, you know, and I, I only have one vote in that group, then, for a recommendation, which is then going to the Policy Board, and they're going to do whatever they want with that. Ultimately, though, it's going to come back to us to ratify. So what I'm hearing, then, is it's the, we would prefer it to be with funding requests that start in 2018 with the applications that are due in the 2017 cycle.
With the start of the new funding cycle.
Yeah, okay. I'm good with that. I think that's really the scope of what we're, I mean, the rest of it's good comment, but it doesn't pertain to what the Art Committee's doing.
Great. I think there were several people on, making comments at the last overall board meeting that they wanted to look at also whether we should have a housing element in there or whether that was something else.
That's, that's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue, okay.
With the Policy Board, too. And that's been debated back and forth, whether it's...
What was that, Mayor? I'm sorry, the issue?
Housing, the housing component, whether or not it's retained within KRC or it's shifted to the county. Affordable housing element.
Yeah. And what was the general consensus or hazard value?
Our consensus was, at our committee, that it, it is part of the core function of the agency.
KRC?
Of KRC. And a piece of that is because, and then they know, historically, those funds have helped pay for the administrative staff, the shared administrative staff, okay? So it's helped keep our dues down, but that may not be the, we don't know what the future funding of that, and I'm, I'm not intimately involved in that, so, and I'm not on that Policy Board. So there was differing views on that, whether it should remain part of the core function or not, or be pushed off, I believe, to the county. So that's, that's all, I don't go to those other meetings where that's being debated. Mayor Mathis is there, and I think Beck maybe.
I don't go there. Well, I go to the KRC, yeah.
So there's differing views on that.
I just know that there's differing views.
There are differing views.
And it's other cities, as well as, I think, the county weighed in on some of that, too.
Well, if you've got your information, we could probably stop talking.
Do you have what you need to go back?
I have what I need, thank you.
Great.
Sorry to belabor that.
That's right.
Good, that's good. I'm glad to check one more item off of our list.
So hopefully, at our, two weeks from now, hopefully can report something back from our meeting this Friday.
Great. So we'll move on then to 7F, adoption of resolution.
We did that one already.
Done.
Oh, right, we did that. She's not here anymore. So that concludes our business items. So we'll go on to reports of committees. Mr. Clausen, do you have a report for us?
About 14 pages of notes from our Finance Committee meeting today, but I think everyone but Mr. Carrright is pretty much familiar with it, so I'll fill you in tomorrow, Jeff.
Sounds good. I read, I read some of it in the paper, so.
Wasn't completely accurate, but most...
I did.
Okay, economic development tourism, Ms. Ashby.
Yes, and we met Monday, we had a very brief meeting, and basically, we talked about our wayfinding system and how to proceed with that. At our meeting on October 27th, which I did not report on, is that we discussed the footferry ridership. Mr. Anderson brought the numbers from this last season, and we took a look at that. And we talked a little bit about the economic, the economic development element of the comprehensive plan in our survey results. And that was about it. And you should have received tonight the minutes from the October 27th Economic Development Committee meeting.
Thank you. Utility and sewer advisory, Mr. Patonsu.
Utility meeting is this Friday, 7:30 in the morning. Sewer Advisory Committee, we had a meeting a few weeks back. It was primarily the budget. There were some other issues. Probably the most notable one that we, that was discussed at length is water, the water reuse program. And the only user we have of that program is the Veterans Home. And the hope was, when we got the grant, so backing up, we have membrane technology that creates the water that can be reused for the purple pipe and used for irrigation uses and things. The membranes are coming to their, end of their useful life. We are, we have one user, the Veterans Home, uses it for irrigation. Their only complaint is, is it makes their grass very green and grow fast, so they have to mow more often. But they use less fertilizer, I guess, so. We're looking, so over the next couple, couple of years, so staff is going to be at the West Sound folks and us, we'll be looking at whether it makes sense to replace those cassettes, move away from that. We're uncertain. It'll be a couple-year process to determine that. Or at least a year to determine what the best alternative is, and that, but the concern is, we know that those cassettes that are extremely expensive are coming to the end of their useful life, and whether or not we're going to replace those or not. If we don't replace them, then the water, we don't have water for reuse program. So that was probably the biggest, weightiest issue that we discussed that evening, other than the budget. And next meeting is, next Wednesday, Mr. Chang is covering for me there that evening, so.
Mr. Patonsu, that's about a million-dollar question, isn't it? Mr. Petansu, uh, that's about a million dollar question, isn't it, for those cassettes?
Yes, it is. It's, they're very expensive.
Very expensive, yeah.
Was there any discussion over the amount of solids that we would be putting into Sinclair Inlet if we were to not use the cassettes?
There's a, a number of options that were, they're going to research, and, and it's could be another clarifier, and they got, they want to weigh all of those things in comparison. Those cassettes in particular, the, um, that system takes a tremendous amount of energy to, to run, and, and so that's going to be part of the analysis. But yes, it would, um, the, one of the discussions there was whether it's just mothballing that system for a while, because if we step away from it, it would, um, reduce the amount of our permit and how much we can discharge into the sound and into the bay. And, but we have, we're less than fifty percent capacity, so it isn't a short-term, uh, concern, but it could be a long-term concern. Uh, so there's discussions that have to happen with our, our permit provider, um, in regards to that.
I remember the discussion as to why there was justification to go with the membranes, and it had to do with the amount of solids that we could put into Sinclair Inlet, and in fact, we were, at that time at least, we were fixed with the level that we were at at that point, and any additional flow that would go into Sinclair could not be increased. So that's why we did the membrane, was so we could increase the capacity of the plant without any more solids into Sinclair Inlet, so I just...
I, I can't speak to it. I just know that they're going to look at, and it very well, this analysis could determine that we need to stay with it and go invest, you know, a million dollars or more in more, you know, in, uh, different cassettes.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Public Property Committee, Mr. Carrright.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we met on Monday morning at eight-thirty. We talked about the park rules again, and I believe that Nick is going to follow up with AWC for some more liability questions on those, so we're still working those through. We discussed Paul Powers Park, and, um, I'm sure by now you've all heard from Mr. Bonds that, or, excuse me, Mr. Dorsey, that we're going to recommend spending the ninety-five-hundred on the, yes, he, the design for the basic bare bones, fifty thousand dollar improvement there, is what we were looking for. And then that went into, uh, a lot of the other budgetary issues that we reviewed, and I'm sure those were forwarded. Um, and the October twenty-seventh meeting minutes are, were on the dais tonight for you, and our next meeting will be December eighth at eight-thirty here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chang, lodging tax advisory.
Nothing to, nothing to report.
Okay. The chimes and lights, Ms. O'Grelli.
We are getting ready for chimes and lights. We pretty much have everything ready to go. Uh, we're taking care of some of the last minute things right now, but the brochure is available, and we're distributing that, um, so that's out. We also have had, um, the little take ones, uh, put in all of the utility bills, so it hit the two cycles, and those are out. Today, the, uh, school flyer went out, so every child will be getting, uh, a flyer, and that advertises the event. So we have a lot of advertising that's taken place. Uh, we'll have the, um, Port Orchard Independent jacket coming out soon, just before the holidays, so we'll have the schedule in there with all the information. So we're moving along well. The big change this year is that tree lighting takes place at five-thirty instead of six. We're going to be having the marching band and all the wonderful activities once again, the hay rides, uh, the pooch and purrs on parade, um, all of the different, um, um, organizations will be coming forth this year to, to volunteer again and be a part of it. Our honorary tree lighters this year are Cindy and Mark Sparks, and they are the owners of Omohundro Company, and they have agreed to come that night, and we're so grateful for them and for relocating here in Port Orchard, and we'll have them speak about what they're about. Um, and I think the big thing right now is that we have, um, our primary sponsor is Kitsap Bank. They have come forward, and they've given us a check for two thousand dollars, and they do so much for us. They've been advertising in all of their bank statements. They'll have, um, a booth out that night, and they'll be serving free goodies, and, um, they have always, for all sixteen years, supported the Festival of Chimes and Lights, and here they are doing it again. So I'm grateful to Kitsap Bank and, and for the generous donation, and, um, we will just work on getting this information distributed, and I think it's going to be a wonderful event.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, waterfront, outside agency, Ms. Ashby.
Actually, I, I had forgot about that. I attend the PSRC meeting tomorrow, and basically at the KRCC meeting, we did discuss quite a bit about the restructuring, um, so.
Mr. Carrright, do you have any? Uh, Mr. Petansu, do you have?
I think we've discussed it at length.
Anyone else? Am I forgetting?
No. I had Kita, but none of them...
All right. Very good. Um, let's see, we're on to, uh, the mayor's report, and I do have several items. I would like to, first of all, read, uh, a letter that we received, uh, about the police department and about Sergeant Maine. Uh, it's addressed to, uh, the subject is Dangerous Dog, Southwest Old Clifton Road, Chanting Circle. Chief Marti, just a quick follow-up regarding the dog attack that occurred at our new park at Old Clifton Road and Chanting Circle on eight-thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen. I interviewed the victim, Michael Rogers, at the department. Michael told me that he had numerous puncture wounds on his arm from trying to protect his small dog. Michael was treated at the VA Hospital and received a tetanus shot. Michael's dog received an injury resulting in a four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollar vet bill. I have been working with Kitsap County Animal Control regarding this incident, and together we were able to locate the owner of the two dogs that attacked Mr. Rogers and his small dog. The owner of the dangerous dogs was placed under arrest and received a criminal citation for failure to control a dangerous dog. And that was based on the Port Orchard Municipal Code, um, and has been given a court date. Kitsap Animal Control Officer Conley also deemed the dogs potentially dangerous and issued his own paperwork. I contacted Mr. Rogers to let him know the dog owner was cited, and, and he will be forwarding the case, his case, to the prosecutor. I just wanted to read this to let folks know that, uh, government may work slowly, but it does work. And, and I, I, this particular danger situation won't happen again, I pretty much can assure you of that. So, uh, kudos to Police Chief Marti and his staff for following up and, and, you know, paying attention to detail. So I just wanted to let you know about that. Um, I'm having a town hall meeting here tomorrow night, and, uh, let me read the paragraph real quickly. When disaster strikes, who will save us? Emergency services are stretched to the limit. The city, state, and federal governments will have their hands full, and you will need to fend for yourself. So, uh, the beginning of the town hall meeting, I'll be giving out some, some real, real, uh, basic suggestions on what you can do for yourself. Uh, there'll be some handouts there, uh, and then, of course, we'll move into the regular town hall meeting where you get the mic and you get to make your comments, but, uh, so if you come and you have some comments about preparedness, emergency, disaster preparedness, please come and make your comments. Uh, I'm, I'm waiting to hear them. Uh, by the way, if you, the first fifty-five families that come, there is such a thing as a free lunch, and it comes in a package like this, and there's five vegetable lunches in here, and every family that comes will receive one of these, up to fifty-five families that come in. So come for your free lunch. I know this is shameless, but I'm trying to bribe you into getting here and, and thinking about preparedness, emergency preparedness, so come to, come to that if you can. Six-thirty tomorrow night, right here in this very chamber. Okay, um, by the way, I am, uh, going to have a Christmas program on Friday, uh, the fifth of December, and also I incorporate that into giving six points of light awards, and I, I try to give at least six points of light awards in the, in the summertime and six in the, in the wintertime. And of course, points of light are just awards of unsung heroes in our community that, that names we seldom hear, but I think we should hear about them, and, and so I always try to do twelve of those a year, and so we'll be doing that on Friday, uh, December fifth at six PM, and it'll be at Christian Life Center, so. And that's my report, so let's move on to, uh, reports of department heads. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, very quickly, uh, temperatures are dropping. You might have seen the brine truck running around town, uh, reminder to check your website, uh, city website to look at the snowplow route map, just so that you can see what road you're on from a priority standpoint, and, um, so that you're not frustrated that your particular residential street is not being attended to.
Are you promising, uh, snow tonight?
No, I think the forecast is probably not snow till Thursday or Friday during a transition. I'm not sure. Uh, it, we just know that we've been, we've been putting the brine down because we've been reaching the colder temperatures, and we have to apply that above forty degrees and falling, so we monitor that very closely. Um, we also, we've been coordinating with, uh, the State Department of Transportation and the county on just winter operations in general, whether that's snow or ice or flooding. Um, there are sandbags up at the shop on the outside of the, the gate. If you need sandbags, we'll, we've also brought down sandbags to a couple of locations in town that are generally problematic during high tide, heavy rain events, so we're preparing for that. Um, also, you may notice the Van Zee lights are very close to being done, uh, very excited about that. And just as a kind of a general reminder, I'm in Bellingham next week for my water CEU, so I'll try to keep up via my PDA emails, but if there's something that you need, you know, send me an email to my city website address, um, because if you call here, you know, I won't probably get it till next Friday, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin?
I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Dorsey for having a short report. So I don't want to take any more than twenty minutes tonight, but, uh, anyway, uh, we had a productive day today, no reason to say anything else. Uh, we all have a work-study next week and, uh, continue to dis, discuss the budget, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bond is, uh, is absent with leave tonight. He had some things to do, and he didn't have anything on the agenda, so he, he got a very unusual night off, so. And Attorney Morris, have you got anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Reinerson.
A couple things.
Okay.
So, um, first of all, I want to thank the council for adopting the policy procedures for processing public request.
Um, and then also I want to thank the council for recognizing that the, um, city needed new phone systems. They're installed, they're working wonderful, um, no complaints from staff. Um, there's some behind-the-scenes issues that I think Vince has worked out. If not, they've all been worked out, so we're really pleased and, and thank the council for that. Um, and then also, I wanted to, um, see what process you guys want to use this year for the Good Neighbors Award. Um, I know last year, or previous years, you guys toured the city, usually on the work-study session, um, in December, that's technically canceled depending on the workload, um, and that didn't happen last year. I think what we did is submitted photos, so just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on how we want to proceed with the Good Neighbor Awards.
Your thoughts?
I like the idea of having people submit photos, but maybe we need to think of an incentive, like Rob's old iPad or something, um...
I haven't gotten a new one yet, so you can have it.
How about free meal?
Oh, yeah, that would be a good one.
That should do it.
That would be good.
Free meal, though.
So, and you guys can also think about it, the next meeting is December ninth, um, so plenty of notice to, to give out to the public should you want to attend the, the week after for a tour, so, um...
Great.
Just let me know.
Well, yeah, they, they, uh, like, did last year, did you go on tour last year?
No.
Okay. Cheers.
There wasn't much participation last year, was there?
No, I think we received, I think four or five, but two of them were from the same, or regarding the same business, so, um, I don't, I think we got one residential, maybe three businesses and zero neighborhoods, pictures. So I will follow up on December ninth. How's that?
Okay.
Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Chief Marti, uh, like I said, great work following up on that vicious dog, and, uh, we appreciate that. And, uh, we'll move on to citizen, or let's see, yeah, citizens' comments. If you raise your hand, yes, please.
Sitting through the... Brother entertaining, thank you very much, Mr. Morris. Has anyone really looked into the specific unfunded mandates for stormwater sewer, stormwater? I looked and I looked and I looked, and the only thing I can find is the entire NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, is the unfunded mandate. We're currently in full compliance from what I can understand through our permit and, and what I've read, uh, and we have been for a number of years. On the budget for this year, we are looking at about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand in additional staffing and support of this mandate. How much of it must be done by the city and how much could be contracted? Can we actually say that we need a person full-time to sample with some public outreach on the side? I've been in contact with the Department of Ecology and the Kitsap County Health District trying to find out what needs to be sampled and how often. There is no matrix for this. The Health District does some of the fecal sampling, uh, throughout the county, including five specific points in Port Orchard, and we paid dues into the regional stormwater monitoring plan, which fulfills our S-eight monitoring and assessment requirements of the permit. I used to be involved heavily in environmental monitoring and sampling, and every project wanted to know how many samples I was going to take, how much time it was, was required to take the sample, process the, the paperwork, deliver the sample to the lab, record results, post results, archive all needed paperwork per sample. Are we hiring a person to take ten samples a day, a week, a month? We don't know. We have forty-five thousand dollars for catch basin cleaning in the budget. Ditch cleaning is budgeted at one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and ninety-four thousand for pond cleaning. Do we need to add the cost of another employee on top of these requests to perform the same functions? Let's get some specific answers before we just agree to these increases. All the reasoning or justification we have heard is unfunded mandate, big fines, and gap analysis. The stormwater rate increase passed last meeting to nine-seventy per ISU will bring in about a million a year for a utility that is budgeted at eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Employees are expensive. We need to hire only as a last resort. We have good employees, and they need to be diverse in ability and taken care of. To hire new people into a programming, into a program with exacting qualifications will do nothing but build specialists and undermine our current workforce's ability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, please.
I just want to interject some observations about the, the Christmas competition. I, I think people are a little bit hesitant to put their own yards in. I mean, it seems kind of egotistical to say, oh, you know, and so I think that my... I mean, it seems kind of egotistical to say, oh, you know, and so I think that might be part of their reluctance. The other thing that I wanted to share is that I've been telling people that if they can't make it to the meeting, that they can contact the city clerk and have their email read to you, and so I don't know if this individual is an individual that I've talked to or not, but I think it would probably be helpful to the public to know what other people's comments are, if you have the time for that, and that it would also get the information to you quicker without having to go to your emails, so that's just what I wanted to say.
So, you, you're in favor of them being read into the record?
They're three minutes worth, if it goes on beyond that, you know, I would say they have to quit reading, but, but just to know what other people are saying would be great. And I know they can't always get here. Lots of people have said, I've got a family, I'd like to participate, but I can't be everywhere, and so they just hold back, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just quickly, call vote to four-three-three, I agree with Allison. It would be great, I know, I watch all the videos at home, and thank you for putting the finance on the, now in the city, so we can really be informed, because that was something that we were completely missing. And I think it's very important that as citizens, we know what's going on with our local government. I'm just focusing on my local government, so, yeah, if people send email because they cannot come, we, we cannot come all the time, we might do it also if we have a comment or something. That would be great if it was divulged to all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right. We don't have an executive session. We're ready to adjourn unless you have something for the good of the order.
So moved.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.